Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 8, 2020 Regular Meeting of the Westchester Board of Trustees. Mr. Jones?
For the record, September 22.
Oh, I'm sorry. My notes are dated. I apologize. September 22, Regular Meeting of the Westchester Board of Trustees. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mrs. Becker?
Present.
Mr. Wong?
Present.
And Mr. Welch, here.
Please stand, face the flag, as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is standing here, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have anyone signed up? No. We don't have anyone signed up this evening for our first Citizen Comments, so we do have a second Citizen Comments section in the middle of our meeting. So we'll kick off tonight's meeting with presentations, and we have our Fire Chief, Rick Prince, here to tell us a little bit about the National Fire Prevention Week and to read a proclamation.
Thank you very much. So there is a proclamation tonight. If you would like me to, I can read this proclamation.
You don't have, if you want to.
Okay. So the proclamation says, "Whereas the Westchester Township is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Westchester Township, and whereas Westchester Township's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas Westchester Township Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and injuries throughout fire prevention and fire safety education, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments throughout the United States responded to an estimated 357,000 home fires, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, the fire departments responded to more than 173,200 incidents annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two out of every five home fires starts in the kitchen, with 31% of the fires the result of unattended cooking. And whereas more than half of the reported non-fatal cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to extinguish the fires themselves, and whereas children under the age of five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas Westchester Township residents should stay in the kitchen when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around all cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from the stove tops. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a home fire in half. And whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen", effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. So the Westchester Fire Department this year for Fire Prevention Month is, you know, in light of COVID, trying to come up with unique and creative ways to get our message out. And I encourage all township residents to go to our township webpage, click on the Fire Department link, which will take you to the 2020 Fire Prevention Activities. There's a Fire Department Cookbook, where you can look at all the favorite recipes from the firefighters from the Westchester Fire Department, and embedded within those recipes are fire safety tips to keep you safe in the kitchen and how to stay safe and prevent kitchen fires. Thank you.
Yes.
Very good.
Chief Prince, I have something for you as well.
Okay.
This week I received a letter. It's dated September 14, 2020. I want to read a little bit of it. "To our area first responders, this past Friday was the 19th anniversary of the attacks on our country," referring to 9/11. "We at Archbishop Mueller High School wanted to take a moment to honor those whose lives were cut short on that horrific day and to say thank you to the brave men and women who selflessly serve their communities as first responders." I have approximately 50 thank you letters from Mueller High School students.
That's nice.
If you could take this and share it with all the other first responders within the township.
I will.
It would be, I think, a great recognition for Westchester's first responders.
Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve trustee meeting minutes for September 8, 2020.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve payment of bills.
I shall move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Burks, we have requisitions greater than $7,500.
Yes, I have five requisitions tonight. The first is for Frost Brown Todd LLC in the amount of $48,915.12 for legal services through August 31 and 2020 for various departments. Item number two is Coulter Ventures in the amount of $8,988.52 for purchase of fitness equipment for fire and services departments. This year, our health insurance provider, Aetna, provided funding to spend on employee wellness. Some of this funding is being granted to departments for department-specific needs. In this case, $3,800 of the health and wellness dollars will be used to supplement the purchase of fitness equipment. Item number three, for McCluskey Chevrolet Incorporated in the amount of $38,730. This is to purchase a 2021 Chevrolet Tahoe 4x4 with a CIP number 1481. The Fire Department is requesting board approval for CIP 1481 to purchase a new staff vehicle for the Assistant Chief of Operations. Upon receipt and outfitting of the new Chevrolet Tahoe, Loss Prevention Bureau and the Fire Department will dispose of a 2005 Crown Victoria with 90,949 miles that exhibits many areas of rust on the frame of the vehicle. As always, they always rotate down the vehicles through the departments. This purchase matches the Fire Department's last three staff vehicles, making interchangeability possible if needed. McCluskey Chevrolet is offering the vehicle at fleet pricing, which is greater than $12,000 in savings over the standard model. McCluskey Chevrolet has a positive history with the Fire Department and is within close distance for any warranty or repair work needed after the purchase of the vehicle. Item number four, Turek Utilities Incorporated in the amount of $102,403 to purchase a QU-13519 bucket truck for fleet replacement. This is CIP 1713. As part of the fleet replacement program, Community Services Department would like to request that the board approve the purchase of the bucket truck to replace the 2002 Ford F-550 bucket truck due to age and normal wear and tear. Maintenance costs of the 2002 Ford have made it necessary to identify a replacement unit for the fleet. The township is using TIF funds for 78% of the cost and Rhodes funds for 22% of the cost. Multiple quotes were solicited, utilizing state bid pricing as well as looking for existing stock. Services Department did identify a demo unit, which was available immediately, saving considerable wait time, and is also the most economical unit per the quotes received. Item number five, Mid Miami Roofing Incorporated in the amount of $15,952.20 to replace the amphitheater roof and gutters, CIP 1355, and three shelter roofs at Keener Park, CIP 1603. As part of the 2020 budget, Community Services developed CIPs to replace the roof and gutters on amphitheater and the roofs of two large and one small picnic shelter in Keener Park. In total, $57,500 was budgeted for these projects. These CIPs will complete the roof replacement of the remaining facilities at Keener Park, and these facilities are a focal point of the community and need to be maintained as such. Multiple quotes were solicited for labor and materials necessary to complete the scope of work. Mid Miami Roofing has proved to be the lowest and most responsive quote to complete the necessary roof replacements.
Thank you, Mr. Burks. I'll entertain a motion to approve requisition items one through five.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think it's good to see the fitness equipment being purchased for our Services Department. We have some of the most active employees that do some of the hardest work. It's good to keep them in shape and strong, so I think Services, our Fire Department, our Police Department, they all need to stay in shape. So I appreciate the use.
Keep those backs strong.
Yeah. You know, sometimes people forget the Services Department also does pretty glorious work, and it's helpful to have them in shape as well. And they typically get the hammy downs from police and fire, but this time they're going to get some new equipment as a result of this program from Aetna, so.
I appreciate that. Very good. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Ms. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Burks, we have one personnel item for Administration.
Yes. A motion to hire Mr. Michael Bohm to the temporary position of Administrative Intern effective June 22 through December 31, 2020 at the hourly rate of $17.50. Mr. Bohm is an incoming senior at Xavier University, was selected through competitive hiring process to fill the Administration Intern position. His experience in data analysis, data presentation, and survey design made him the perfect candidate to help complete the Westchester organizational analysis. He began work for the township in June and was expected to finish out the internship sometime in August. However, due to the complex time and time-consuming nature of the project, the timeline for completion has been extended. With the extended timeline, Michael's compensation will exceed the funding authority of the administrator. Michael has proven to be an excellent choice for this temporary position and is necessary to complete the project in a reasonable amount of time. Administration requests approval of the temporary hire.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item six.
I shall move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Bame is, the services that he's providing us are saving us thousands of dollars from going outside the township for a contractor to do the work that he's specifically hired for. So it's really a great cost-saving thing. Can you hear me now?
Yeah. And we get a nice set of young eyes to look over everything, just so all of us can, and his analysis is, he's doing a lot of great work, but he's also gaining the benefit of working with some of the best project managers and data folks in the industry. So Lisa, Kelly, and Larry are doing great work, so.
Well, yeah. And I'd like to take some of the credit for it, but I really can't. They're doing all the work on it, and the trustees have asked us to do this in-house, so we're learning a lot from it, too. That's added benefit. If I might plug, the International City County Managers Association ethics require us to promote the next generation of leaders in local government, and this is an excellent opportunity, and we may be coming to you with more ideas that we have come up with regarding engaging the universities for students. In fact, Lisa just brought up an idea in possibly having students do their capstone project based on some of the operational needs of the township. So it's really good, and it really helps us fulfill our ethical obligation for promoting the profession to the next generation of leaders.
Great.
Lisa will always find something for them to do.
Well, and if I can monetize the benefit of Michael, we've paid him about $5,000 in salary so far. We don't expect to double that by the end of the year, and our quotes were between $30,000 and $50,000 for a study, so there will be an enormous financial benefit to hiring Michael tonight.
And it has allowed us to be a little more flexible, because it seems like every time I talk to, every time they talk to me, or I talk to one of the trustees or something, we want a little bit more information, so we have to kind of expand the scope of the, but it's really responsive, too, because he can do it right away. It's going to be a good start.
Good.
Excited to see the result. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. We have several business items this evening. Mr. Burks, business item number seven is for Administration.
Yes. Motion to approve the Second Renewal Concession Agreement between the Westchester Township Board of Trustees and the Westchester Baseball Partnership to establish revised terms of the management use and the Westchester Baseball Partnership to establish revised terms of the management, use, operation, and maintenance of the Westchester Baseball Complex and authorize the township administrator to make non-substantive changes with law director approval and to execute said agreement after approval granted by the National Park Service. Westchester Board of Trustees entered into a concession agreement with the Westchester Baseball Partnership on December first, two thousand and nine to manage use, operation, and maintain service of the facilities of the Westchester Baseball Partnership. In two thousand and fourteen, the parties renewed for five years a first renewal to the concession agreement. This agreement was amended in two thousand and seventeen to include collaboration payment for the synthetic turf fields. Parties have been working on the second renewal agreement for a few months now and would like to move forward with the second renewal for a five-year term. If the parties accept and the trustees codify approval, the renewal, renewed agreement must be approved by the National Park Service before it can be authorized. I also want to point out that Rob Hall with the, he's the president of the Westchester Baseball Partnership Board is here. If you have any questions or if he'd like to say a few words, if you allow, he might give us an update on how it's going.
It's a great idea.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item seven.
I assume move.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's kick off our discussion. Rob, do you want to give us a little bit of an update up here at the, at the DAS? On how the baseball stadium's doing?
Appreciate the time. Obviously, my first year taking over the board has been much different than what I expected it to be, but we opened on May twenty-sixth, which was the first day we were allowed by the governor. And honestly, the summer went great. It was really nice to just see activity back at the park, see the kids out playing. We had tournaments every weekend up until Labor Day, basically. I think we had one off in August. And then we had a lot of weeknight games, practices, activities going on. Like I said, it's been a challenging year trying to make sure that we were complying and making sure everybody was safe. But as far as the activity at the park, everybody cooperated really well and we've had a ton of fun, so I think it's working out really well.
Very good. Any questions for Rob?
I do want to point out the fact that Rob has been a great to work with. He's doing a lot of really out-of-the-box thinking when it came, comes to improving the park, making the necessary improvements that may not have been under the previous leadership of the, and I want to tip my hat to you. It's been great to work with you and we look forward to working with you for a long time.
I appreciate it. Appreciate the help.
I stopped by the complex and met you. Seems like a well-run operation. I saw your whole family.
Yes, absolutely. It's definitely a family affair, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, yeah.
Do you, you want to share any information about the possibility of the naming rights?
So what we're trying to accomplish, kind of the way we're set up in the past, there has been, there was a naming agreement several years ago before I took over with a local automotive group. That was gone when I took over. I was able to work out something with First Watch Restaurants, which has been a really nice sponsorship. That's obviously, they've reassured me that they want to continue that into the next couple of years. That was in question a little bit with what was going on with COVID and the restaurant business, but they seem to be committed and doing, doing well, and they want to continue that. And then we also are talking with Kemba Credit Union right now with them building their headquarters. They actually sent me a really cool picture from the top floor of their new building overlooking the park. And what those naming agreements kind of allow us to do is more flexibility with, in the past, there was a weekday gate fee. So if somebody came to watch their kid, grandkid, or just wanted to stop by and watch a game, there was a fee to do that. And with this, we, we were able to eliminate that completely this year, which ended up being a little challenging. We had made that decision prior to COVID. That ended up being a little challenging. But if we're able to continue with First Watch and then add Kemba in, we can continue to make it, you know, free for the community to come by and watch baseball and for a family to come by and watch baseball on non-tournament dates, which is important to me, and I think that's the way it should be, so.
Very good.
I appreciate all of you and all of your volunteers that keep baseball alive in the township. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I, you know, I've said it before, in two thousand and fourteen, when we renewed this agreement, this is really a labor of love. These guys don't get paid for this. They want to see baseball alive and well. They want to have the kids out playing as much baseball as they possibly can. So it really is a worthwhile endeavor.
It's great to see the kids out being active. That's what we need.
Yeah, it is.
Seems like a well-run operation. I don't see the lights were left on twenty-four-seven and water running, so.
Good.
Very good.
It's a good agreement. Anything else? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
And Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Let's see. Business item number eight is for administration.
Yes, motion to approve a contract in premium rates with Aetna Medical Insurance for January one, two thousand and twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one with full HRA funding and authorize the township administrator to execute said contract. Each year, the township health insurance broker Strategic Employee Benefit Solutions approaches current providers for preliminary renewed, renewal proposals. The initial health insurance proposal from Aetna came in at a twenty-six point eight percent increase. However, in two thousand and nineteen, SEBS negotiated a rate cap of four point nine percent for the two thousand and twenty-one plan year with no change to employer, employee cost share. The township's two thousand and twenty experiences remain favorable. There was a possibility to renew at a lower rate. The pandemic did not create a market for favorable rates in two thousand and twenty. Administration is proposing the trustees allow the township to increase the HR contributions for the gold plan from one thousand to two thousand for single and two thousand to four thousand for EESP, EECH, and family. For the two thousand and twenty-one plan year, Aetna is again offering fifteen thousand dollars in wellness innovation funding. These funds can be used for wellness initiatives designed to improve the health and insurance experience of the employee population or to offset ADP-related costs such as carrier connections reporting. If you have any specific questions, Lisa Brown in the HR department, Tanya and Charles have been addressing this renewal, and she has specifics about the details.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item eight.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions for Lisa?
Yeah, what is the rate in two thousand and twenty-one? Is, is it once again the four point nine percent increase?
Yes, it'll be a four point nine percent increase for two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. That's, that's great.
Yeah.
Given that they first offered twenty-six point eight percent.
That was, that was the research, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two-year renewal ended up being a good, a good decision last year, so.
Great. Okay. Good job.
It's cost of going business. Healthcare creeps up a little bit every, every renewal.
Yeah.
Anything else? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Item nine is for community development.
Yes, motion to approve an amendment to the existing development agreement with North Point Development, originally adopted September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of five hundred thousand from TIFF funding to provide certain infrastructure to complete development of additional acreage within the Westchester Trade Center. Westchester Administration asked the Community Development Department to draft an amendment to the original development agreement between Westchester Township and North Point Development in order to complete the roadway infrastructure improvements to access the far western parcel of the development. The Community Development Department engaged Frost Brown Todd to draft the attached amendment for review. North Point has also reviewed this amendment and is comfortable with the draft language presented for trustee consideration. The amount of this amendment is five hundred thousand dollars, paid entirely out of the SR seven forty-seven TIFF, utilizing cash on hand and no borrowing. With this road infrastructure in place, North Point proposed to construct buildings eight and nine in the Westchester Trade Center. Building eight is proposed at three hundred and one thousand square feet, and building nine is proposed at one hundred ninety-nine thousand six hundred square feet for a combined new construction square footage of just over five hundred thousand square feet. Westchester has formed a great working relationship with North Point Development on the overall development of the Trade Center with emerging businesses such as GE Aviation Additive Development, Fama Conica, Expressions Therapeutics, and many more exciting tenants already.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item nine.
I assume move.
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
This is exactly what TIFF is for.
Yep.
You know, we're, we're going to extend the great drive so that these other buildings can be constructed. And it's, it's noteworthy to point out that North Point is how many years ahead of schedule?
Three.
Three years ahead of schedule. And so the property taxes that we would have been getting three years down the road had North Point not.
Built.
Built, seen the, seen the value in being in Westchester. We're going to start reaping those rewards today and going back into the, to the TIFF fund. This was a good investment by the township.
Not only that, we're going to add hundreds of jobs to our community, people that want to live here, work here, and play here.
I do, I do want to point out that one of these buildings wasn't planned on early on when we, in two thousand and eighteen. This is a, just yet another opportunity for them to do more work in Westchester. They, they really enjoy the partnership.
Fantastic.
I think Aaron had a comment.
Oh, that's right. We need to, we should vote on this after.
Oh, after the second hearing?
Yeah, the second reading, so.
That's right. Forgot about that.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron.
I'm just going down the list here.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll entertain a motion to table item nine.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to table. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Becker?
Yes. We'll revisit that after our second readings. Item ten is for community development as well.
Yes, motion to declare eighty-three zero-five Andrea Court as a public nuisance. Eight, eight-three-zero-five Andrea Court is parcel number M five-six-two-zero-dash-two-six-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-two-zero. Owner is Sylvia Schotker. Status is residential property that appears vacant and is not in foreclosure. The inspection revealed high grass, weeds, and miscellaneous debris, and this action is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five-zero-five-point-eight-seven.
Very good. Do you have the motion?
I have it up. I'll read it.
Go for it.
Having reviewed the staff report and affidavit, I move that we declare the property located at eighty-three oh-five Andrea Court to be a public nuisance as authorized by the Ohio Revised Code. Staff is directed to cause removal of the nuisances identified and monitor the property for ninety days to required, to require continued compliance. An administrative charge of twenty-five percent shall be added to the contractor fee for the property.
Very good. I have a motion. I will second that motion. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
We have item eleven is for fire.
Yes, motion to approve agreement between Westchester Township Fire Department and the Westchester Hospital LLC for the Drug Bag Exchange Service Participation Program and authorize the township administration, administrator to make non-substantive changes if necessary with law director approval and execute said agreement. The fire department has been, has reached an agreement on participating in Westchester Hospital Drug Bag Program. By converting to this program, the department will realize a cost savings based on the following two factors. One, a reduction on on-hand inventory, and two, a reduction in cost of expired medication. Based on current pricing, this program will reduce the cost of on-hand medications from fifty-seven hundred dollars to one thousand one hundred dollars and would require minimal additional purchasing. Based on current data, the fire department expects to perform a bag exchange around three hundred times a year for a total of nine thousand dollars. This brings the total estimated cost of the program to eleven thousand four hundred dollars, which represents a reduction in medication cost of forty percent.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item eleven.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Good cost-saving measure.
Yeah, nice work on this, and it's great to be able to partner with Westchester Hospital. Anyway, we can reach out to our community partners and save money. It's a win-win.
Yep.
So, very good. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Burks, item twelve is police.
Yes, motion to approve the contractual agreement with the City of Oxford Police Department for the participation in Butler County OVI Task Force. The police department is requesting the trustees' approval to renew the contractual agreement with the City of Oxford Police Department for the participation in the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one Butler County OVI Task Force. The City of Oxford has been the sponsor for the, for this task force for the past several years, and the police department will be compensated up to twelve thousand dollars for targeted enforcement to decrease the number of incidents of OVI violations and related offenses.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item twelve.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. Mr. Burks, item thirteen is for services.
Yes. Motion to approve a contract with Jamie's Mulch and Topsoil Incorporated for the plans and specifications for the landscaping of the roundabout at La Sordsville Westchester Road and Beckett Ridge Boulevard, not to exceed fifty-three thousand seventy-four dollars, and authorize the township administrator to execute said contract and all other necessary documents to effectuate the project. The Butler County Engineers Office recently completed the construction of the new roundabout at La Sordsville Westchester Road and Beckett Ridge Boulevard. Federal safety grant funds were utilized for the project, saving Westchester residents and the township significantly on this project. Landscaping has been completed on our other new roundabouts in the township and was not included in the project funding. Clientures Group provided the township with a landscaping design, including construction plans and specifications for the new roundabout. Community Services solicited multiple quotes for landscaping the new roundabout. Jamie's Mulch and Topsoil Incorporated was selected to provide the materials and labor necessary per plans and specs for the project. Jamie's Mulch and Topsoil is a Westchester business.
I'll entertain a motion to approve item thirteen.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I was, got a sticker shot when I first saw the number, but then after discussion, I found out that was a big area.
It is a pretty good size.
Huge.
Plans are expensive, so.
Yeah, they are. Landscaping can get expensive.
Good, yeah, ones that are drought-resistant and strong.
And the reason we haven't seen this recently is because, for instance, the most recent one at Beckett and Smith Roads, right there, that was all taken care of at a TIFF dollars, and we didn't have to vote upon it. But this, because it's a separate fee, we have to vote upon it.
Yep, it was part of the project cost at Beckett, and then this one is separate cost.
It's great to see we're using a Westchester company as well.
Yeah, boulders are expensive.
Yep.
Rocks, yes.
And getting their, getting them, they're expensive, too.
Thank you, Mark.
I bet. It's a long list.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Business item fourteen is for services.
Yes, motion to approve statutory resolution, resolution number thirty-six dash two thousand and twenty, finding the two thousand and two Ford F, F-550 bucket truck not needed or unfit for public use, authorizing sale of said equipment vehicle at public auction. The Community Services Department has a two thousand and two Ford F-550 bucket truck valued in excess of twenty-five hundred dollars. Therefore, the Community Services Department requests the board to declare this vehicle as obsolete and unfit for public use and declare as surplus and authorize the sale of the vehicle pursuant to Ohio Revised Code five-zero-five-point-one-zero-three. This is the truck that the new purchase will be replacing.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve item fourteen.
I assume move.
One second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
See, we have no first readings or resolutions tonight, so we'll move on to our second citizens' comments. If there are any residents, business owners, property owners that would like to address the board, now is your chance. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll close our second citizens' comments section. We do have two second readings this evening on resolutions previously heard by the board. So I will entertain a motion to approve resolution thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty.
I'll so move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes. Our second resolution to approve this evening is resolution. Our second resolution to approve this evening is resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-twenty. I'll entertain a motion to approve thirty-five dash twenty-twenty.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Fantastic project.
Yeah, very good. They're both, both great projects.
Yeah.
Both great.
We're moving in the right direction.
Yes, we are. Building, building, building. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Yeah, Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
So let's go back to item nine. I'll entertain a motion to remove item nine from the table and vote to approve. Well, let's remove the table first.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to remove item nine from the table. Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve item nine.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want to comment that the rate of return for this investment is excellent for the township.
Yep.
It's going to be, it's going to be a big, continue to be a big project. It keeps growing and growing. Anything else? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Wong.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mrs. Becker.
Yes. We've gotten to that point in the meeting where we get to hear ourselves talk. Mr. Burks, do you have any discussion items or comments this evening?
Uh, no, not, not this evening. I did, I kind of ambushed Rick with the thank you letters. And it is first responders, and it's an important month for them. It's a constant reminder, it seems like, in September. My birthday is on the tenth, so it's kind of a special time for me. It's the day after my birthday, and I don't, you know, it's always a reminder of important times.
Very true.
And so, thank you, Rick, and Joel, and the E, the E-nine-one-one teams, and everyone that has to deal with people on their worst day of their life, so.
Mr. Jones, did you have anything?
Yeah, I want to congratulate the three of you and Mr. Burks and certainly Mr. Wigan for negotiating successfully the terms for developing the residence of Clock Tower, the project. And to say it's exciting is a huge understatement. I mean, what it's going to look like downtown in five years, you won't recognize it. But you will enjoy it. And I also like to note that tomorrow, well, I should say this evening, let me back up. The Auditor of State has recognized Westchester Township again for its excellence in financial reporting, where once again to receive the Auditor of State Award with distinction, which it's a cooperative effort, involves the three of you, the administration. Ken Kine, Ken, where are you? Great job. And he was not able to make it here this evening, but he will be here. Auditor of State favor will be here tomorrow morning, eleven fifteen, to personally make the presentation. This is the kind of recognition that bodes well when you're dealing with entities like Moody's, and they're evaluating our credit worthiness, and it speaks to the integrity of our records. So it is very important. And it does save our residents money when we realize that triple-A bond rating, which is the highest you can get, the best rating you can get. And again, thank you, all of you, for the collaborative effort.
Kudos to Youtubers.
Thank you, Mark.
Congratulations to you and the finance team.
Thank you.
Triple-A is the gold standard.
It's the gold standard.
How many years have you received that award?
Uh, let's see, seven out of eight, eight out of nine, something like that. Had an off year one year. But it's a healthy thing then, maybe, huh?
Yeah.
It's a good check on everything. It's good.
Yeah, it's good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Mr. Welch, did you have anything this evening?
I have nothing.
Okay. Mr. Wong.
I have nothing.
Oh, my gosh, okay. Well, I'm excited to download my firefighter cookbook tonight when I get home. Excited to make some chili.
Is it a download, or are you just looking?
It's on the website.
You download it?
Then, then you get to think about your batteries on your smoke detector while you're burning your chili. You think about your batteries. That's the... It starts tomorrow. Oh, I have to wait till tomorrow? Oh, man. Now I have another thing on my to-do list for tomorrow. That's okay. Wonderful. I appreciate everything. Thank you so much. So we do have executive session this evening. So I'll entertain a motion to recess our regular meeting and go into executive session with our legal counsel for the purpose of conferencing with our attorney for township disputes involving the township or pending your imminent court action, and to consider confidential information related to marketing plans, specific business strategies, production techniques, trade secrets, or personal financial statements of an applicant for economic development assistance. The board will adjourn, return to adjourn executive session and adjourn the regular meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call, please.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
And Mrs. Becker.
Yes.
And Mr. Wong.
Yes.
We are in recess.
We're back from executive session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn executive session and resume the September 22 regular meeting.
I'll so move.
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes.
We've concluded all of our business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this September 22 regular meeting of the Westchester Board of Trustees.
I so move. A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Jones, roll call please.
Mr. Wong?
Yes.
And Mr. Welch?
Yes.
And Mrs. Becker?
Yes. We are adjourned.